Okay, everyone, it's 5:00 PM. We're going to get started. Mr. Beatry will not be able to make it tonight. So we do have a quorum. The meeting tonight is a workshop to discuss the landlord program and rental safety inspection and verification program ordinance. The goal of tonight's meeting is to have a determination by the Planning and Zoning Commission, whether they will, not Planning and Zoning Commission, but the Planning and Zoning Committee of the Michigan City Council, to either recommend the ordinance, do not recommend the ordinance, recommend with amendments, or no recommendation. The way it'll work, I will ask members of the committee to speak first, and they can offer amendments or give their opinions. And then I'll go to the city council, and then we will have a short time for public comment. Ask everybody to keep their comments brief, and then we will be taking a vote on this, hopefully, within the hour. So with that, I'll start, and just Mr. Hamilton, if he has any comments or amendments to make.
I think everybody here pretty much knows my sentiment on this. I'm not for it. I think that if we were, had everything else in order, I would be fine with this. But we are so far out of order, and I know we need more code enforcement, so that's, I agree with that. I talked to the mayor and the city planner about that last year. So until we can get a handle on that and the budget, which I know it's budget time, we're starting already, I don't think we should be moving forward with this. And I am, I feel like we're rushing. We had the last meeting on the Port County Fair Week. We have this meeting on the biggest tourism event for Michigan City. We had two big events, and we have two meetings. I don't think that's right. I don't think the public's got enough time to come in or talk about this. So I think this is a moot issue, and we should just let it go for now.
All right. Okay, to address the timing of the meeting, we're still on first reading. We haven't, we haven't had second reading yet of the city council. So we have had two public workshops, plus the first reading of the, of the city council, and there will be two more readings. So I did not intentionally schedule this on any particular day, just scheduled it whenever we could get people together on the committee to talk about it. And that's, that's what the purpose of the two meetings were. They were committee meetings. I personally am going to offer two amendments to the ordinance. I want to strike out the two whereas clauses that deal with the lead-based paint hazard reduction program and the lead grant, which is on page one. And also on page two, section 22-803, subsection A, 2A, it brought a person residing in Indiana authorized to manage the rental unit. And I'd like to change that to a person residing within a 50-mile radius of Michigan City authorized to manage the rental unit. Those are the two amendments that I will be proposing. So with that, I will go to any other member of the council that has a comment or an amendment. Mr. President?
I have a couple questions. If the ordinance is passed by chance, then we're automatically then telling the mayor that he needs to budget and two employees and all the supplies that it takes to rent this property. Is that correct?
We're not telling the mayor anything. I've, I've talked to the city controller regarding adding two people, two code enforcement people, and I do not have a definitive answer on that yet. And I would not be supporting this ordinance without the guarantee that we would have at least two additional code enforcement people. I will not support it if we don't have that in the, in the budget.
Did he say when he might be getting back to the yard?
I was told to call, call back again at the end of the month, so I'll be talking to him between now and the second reading of the city council.
Okay, so he said call back between now and the end of the month?
No, the end of July, this being the last day of July. I didn't, did not call him today.
All right. Okay, that's, that's an issue with me, because if we don't have, if the support's not there, if we don't have the funding for the other two people, then it doesn't make sense to even--
No, I agree with that.
Okay. The other question I have is with the maximum fine or penalties of $7,500 after they total up to $7,500. So that's the maximum. So what happens after penalties of $7,500? Then where, then where does it go with the landlord? I mean, does the city take them to court? Or what, what's the next process?
Well, if they do not pay the $7,500, it would be just, same as not paying any other finer citations associated with the city, so.
Okay. So what you're saying is the landlord would go to court with the city, and the city would try to get the money?
Correct.
All right. You know, if the city wouldn't get the money, and the landlord refuses to pay the money, then what do we do? Is he pleading against his--
I don't, I don't know, I don't know the exact, but there are legal methods of securing, securing that money. And I'm not a lawyer. I couldn't tell you what they would be.
Okay.
Typically, any unpaid fines that we have, whenever we issue citations or do other work, typically, it's pleading against the department.
Thank you.
And the violations and fees for the violation, I think, are too extreme. I don't necessarily have a problem with violating, penalizing the landlord if this is enacted, because they know they have to follow the program. But I think that the amounts that are on here are too extreme, and I really haven't thought of, you know, an amount that I would save. But, you know, $500 to fail your register, $500 to fail your updated registration, and fail, fail your, to renew your registration, another $500, I think is too extreme. And I, I'm sure you didn't make that up, Sharon, that came from South Bend?
It did, it did. It did, it did.
Yeah.
But it, it went through our legal department as well. So what, what would be the fine that you would suggest?
I would probably suggest $100, because I can see what's going to happen with the $500. I believe if someone does get penalized $500, that they're going to pass that on to the tenants, to their rent, somehow, you know, break it down where the tenant's going to pay for some. And I don't want to necessarily see the tenant being penalized because of a landlord that doesn't take care of the property. And he continually doesn't want to take care of the property, and he doesn't want to abide by the ordinance, but he continually, I don't want to say punishes, but puts the burden back on the tenant. And the tenant's probably trying to make it from month to month anyway, just trying to pay the rent. So I think it's too, too much, and $100, just for the sake of conversation.
So you're supportive of the ordinance, that I would reduce the fines?
I'm not necessarily in favor of the ordinance, but I'm just giving you suggestions of what I would like to see made amendments to. Number one, the penalties, like I said, you know, the $7,500 after that's reached, you know, what's going to happen after that? And I guess Sue said that if they go to court, there must be a process that has to be done. And even if the city controller says, "Yeah, we have the money in the budget to hire two people in the inspector's department," that that money's not coming out of the River Bowl funding, because I know the city controller can say, "Yeah, we have money for anything that we'd like to do," but that money needs to come out of the general fund and not the River Bowl. So if we could, if we go in that direction, I might, I might consider. That's all I have.
Any other city council comments or amendments?
I don't have an amendment, just a comment. Speaking, from speaking with a couple landlords after we had the first meeting, it seems like some were of the position that if this was implemented, they'd just sell and walk away. So with the, it seems like there's already a shortage of quality rentals, and we have a big sell-off because this is implemented. My concern for people who can't afford to purchase homes, and if they run out of places to rent, what, what happens to the people that are displaced if, if that were to happen? That was the biggest concern I have with that.
Any other city council comments or amendments?
My only concern was how do we, how do we get add-on to extra people when the resident inspectors are stressed, spread through them? That was my only concern. Where, where does, where does the funding come from?
I stated earlier that I would not go forward with this unless there were two additional inspectors in the budget for 2020. So that's my position on it. I understand that the way the code enforcement is structured now, that they could not handle the extra work. I mean, it's moving from a--
Boy, you grew up with--
Exactly, exactly, exactly. And there are costs associated with that. Whereas in the long run, you get a better outcome. Any other city council people?
The only comment I wanted to make was, I do believe the planning department and inspecting department is shorthanded. I'm not sure if I'm in favor of this or not, but if it doesn't pass, I'd still like to see that, that the inspecting department get at least one more person to help out with what we have. That's the only comment I have.
Okay, I'll move on to public comment. State your name and the address, and let's try to keep comments to a couple of minutes. And if you want to offer amendments or just offer comments, that's fine. So is there anyone from the public that wants to talk about this? This man?
My name's Ryan Evansen, Tooton, Carter Road, Michigan City. Lived here a long time. I'm a landlord. Fix up a lot of abandoned properties in Michigan City. I agree that property values have gone up recently. There are a lot of homes that need to be repaired and a lot of slum lords in Michigan City. I think it's a huge problem. And there's a twofold solution. There's what we do with currently what we have, and maybe after we've corrected the problem, what to do after that. But I think there is a very simple solution. There are just way too many homes that need to be repaired, and a lot of people living in conditions that are unfair. We just recently had someone who, about, I thought they were a homeowner, and so we didn't say anything. We were fixing up the property next door, and the house was leaking, the bathrooms were unusable, there's critters going inside and out, they're flexible, visible on the outside of the house. The inspection department can barely do anything because of non-compliance with the owner and inability to even have the owner do anything about it. So that's, I am way in favor of something. There could be issues with he says, she says, tenant versus landlord. There's a simple solution of photos, videos, dates. And I think the current problem where someone has too many that they can't take care of, there has to be some accountability in Michigan City. I have a lot of places that I rent for higher, higher rent, and some for lower, so that people can stay here and still live in a nice neighborhood. Michigan City, property values are going way high, a lot faster than we can account for them, and it's in everyone's best interest to fix up their properties. It helps every single one of us out, every single one of us. Our property values will increase if everyone just puts a little time into their house and creates a safe environment for people to live in. Thank you.
Sue?
Hi, Michigan City, Michigan City. Just a couple of comments on things that have been said tonight. Obviously, I'm very much in favor of this, because I'm along with Chris, one of those people that hasn't got any force of stuff. And, and I understand what you're saying, that rents may go up. It hasn't typically happened in other cities, but let's say it does, or, or let's say the comment was made, "Well, we're just going to sell." Good, okay, sell, please, sell. If you can't keep up your houses, get rid of them. Because what Ryan is saying is what we need here in Michigan City is to become vigilant. Just because the rent is going to be made a little higher, which I don't believe is going to happen, I believe it's going to, it has to sort of happen in other cities, okay? Let's put it that way. What, what you're saying is, "I'm afraid it's going to go up, so let's leave them in dangerous houses." To me, that's not a solution. If we're worried about rent going up, telling them they have to stay in a house that doesn't have proper plumbing, proper electric, that's unsafe for their children to live in, to me, that's not a solution. That's not an option. If, if we suddenly have all these landlords who want to sell their properties, all right, go for it. I will give you names of good, good landlords who are willing to buy the houses. Okay? So, so that doesn't concern me. Yes, I agree with everybody, and I spoke with Sharon about this. We would have to have more people to enforce it, absolutely. And she said she'd not be moved forward without it. So I get that part, okay? That part's important. But the lack of accountability right now is the big issue. What didn't seem to get across at the last meeting was tenants, as a general rule, are afraid to come to us. Because Indiana is so lax with the way that they do the landlord tenant thing, you can evict a tenant for basically any reason. So the second that tenant calls us, they come in, they fill out the landlord tenant complaint form, we go out there, we look at the property, we, we contact the landlord, the landlord says, "Whoop, you know, stop right now, eviction, you're out of here." And these people don't have the resources to move on in many cases, so they continue to live in substandard housing, in many cases, dangerous housing, because they're afraid to speak up. They don't come to us until they're absolutely at their, you know, bottom of the barrel, the plumbing doesn't work anymore, and the electric doesn't work, because they know what's going to happen. This ordinance would get us in the door before it gets to that point. And if the landlords don't have the ability to keep their houses up, then maybe it's time for them to get out of business. And that, that's just, that's, that's what I have to say. Though I don't know if this one's edgy or not, but that's honestly, we need, we need accountability here in Michigan City.
Anyone else from the public?
Yes.
Doug? Go ahead.
I am Doug Soons. I reside at 1810 Pine Street in Michigan City. I'm also the president of Northwest Indiana Landlords Association of Michigan City. Several of my members have called me and indicating that this ordinance is extremely unfair and will probably drive them out of business. Now, I heard Sue mention the economics of fixing up their properties. And I like to use my current situation as an example. I own a building at 1013 West H Street. I've owned that building for 20 years. I've rented it out for 20 years. As of recently, the quality of tenants in Michigan City has gone down, or I have become lax in my selection of tenants. I currently am involved in the eviction process, which I started in March of this year. After taking it to court, or should we say, after the sheriff did his first job and delivered a notice to quit, I was in schedule for a court date, which was three weeks into the future. I went to court, and my tenant, or the plaintiff did not, I was the plaintiff, the defendant did not show up. The judge said that they were going to give them 10 more days to exit the property before she would actually deliver notice to me, so the sheriff could go out and make this eviction. Well, just in the notice to quit, that was 10 days, thereafter, there was a three-weeks scheduled court date, which is another three weeks. Then I got a judgment from the court that they get to stay 10 more days before the sheriff would be able to go out and remove these people from the property. I made the connection with the sheriff. I made sure he was aware of the court order, and that was three weeks ago, and he has yet to visit the premise. I have not gained rent from that premise since March of this year. Now, if you're going to penalize me, now, in that time period, with these notices being sent to the tenant, I have observed the tenant tearing up my property. I do drive by, and I see they literally have peeled the paint off of the porch, they're peeling the paint off of the door, they're making a very attractive building ugly. I don't know what the features are inside the property, because I can't go to the property. When I went to the property on three occasions, the tenant literally verbally assaulted me, had me fear for my safety. At six o'clock in time, I have not been with, been to the building unless I have someone with me. Now, is the city going to compensate me for my lack of being able to rent this property due to the normal eviction process, which is approximately two and a half to three months? That's lost income. Is the city going to compensate me when I go in and have to rehab this facility because this person has lived there angrily for the last two months? They could, they could tear up a wall and cause $500 damages within minutes. So I see the advantages in relationship to people not staying in substandard properties, but they don't have to move. They make it substandard.
Whoa, wait, one person talking?
Okay, you know, if I have a problem with my property and the city brings it to my attention, I'm pretty sure I've worked with you, have I not? And I've corrected the issue. And when I worked in that specific situation, the tenant was two months behind in rent. Okay? Now, if you're going to want me to, I would like to continue in this business in this town, but we need to do something about the quality of people that live in this town. Because any one of us, once that eviction order is delivered, we can't get into the premise for at least another month or two, at which point in time, we're putting them on notice that they're going to damage it. And when you take them to court to try and recover it, these people have no economic means. So if they don't like where they're living, they should move. But most of them go, "Well, I'll put up with rent at $400 a month." And it's just like, "Well, if you want to live in a $400 a month apartment, then live in a $400 a month apartment." If it has leaky plumbing, then that's what you're dealing with. If you don't like it, I'm not holding them there with chains. Okay?
Chris, stand.
Michigan City, Michigan City law enforcement. You are the prime example why you want this ordinance enforced, what you've just said. If they have leaky pipes, then deal with it. Those that kind of said, "Oh, they can move on," you know, they shouldn't have, if it's a $400 apartment, it should be clean and safe and not leaking pipes and stuff. Ah, ah, I gave you your time, you didn't mind.
I'm listening.
One person--
This is the reason why. You're the prime example of, "So what? They don't like it, they can leave." You're right, there's a choice out there, but your clientele that you're choosing is because of the situation you're putting into. So you're going to get the $400 clientele coming in there, tearing up your property and stuff, because you don't care, they're not going to care. If you actually took care of your properties, and you get a better renter in there, and screen your renters and stuff like that, you wouldn't be running into these issues.
We're not, we're not doing a back and forth. We're on the floor.
Okay.
So the county that, you know--
City. Let's raise.
Wait, wait, Chris. One person, if we, if we get into this back and forth, we'll just end it. So one person talks at a time. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just in response to that, maintaining properties with improper plumbing is against the law today. They just can't catch you. So it's already against the law. This is a law to catch people--
Now--
One person--
We got a response--
No, one person is talking. This is not a back and forth.
Second of all, if you're having these problems with being a landlord today, you're having them today. The law's in pass, and in fact, this law would make no effect on the fact that you can rent to somebody who mistakes your property. That's a danger of business. If I owned a burger stand, and I hire employees who tear stuff up and steal stuff, that's a risk of business, and you might not catch them. You might sue them and not get the money back. That's a danger of doing business, and it's the case today without this ordinance. This ordinance enables the city to catch people maintaining properties in unlawful conditions. It's illegal today, but the cops can't come in and find it. That's all it is. So this is an enforcement ordinance. It changes nothing without people having to maintain their property. You're just not going to get away with it if you're keeping people in unlawful conditions. So I just, the pushback, this is going to be some big change. It's not. It's just an enforcement mechanism for what is already the law.
Is there anyone with a comment who has not spoken yet? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I have one property--
Name, name.
Trevor Johnston, 124 West Homer Street. I've had two judgments against my renters. I've had to evict two renters. They damaged the place, or they punched holes in the wall. You'll never retrieve that money. I've had, tried to get garnishments against them, you're, you're never going to get the money back with them. No matter, your security isn't going to cover it, they, like you said, they're going to wind up spending your security deposit on our last month's rent, and you can't get them out of there. I've got them physically push on me, poke me in the head, thrust me out, tell me they're going to kill me. I call the police, and what they tell me? "We can't do anything until we see them do it to you." I've never collected a penny. I've lost my butt on this stuff. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not an expensive landlord. I get them somewhere to start, somewhere to get going, get on their own feet, and that's why I do that, because that's what I had to do. And it seemed like you, somebody said here, "You don't screen them." I screened them. They're supposed to be fantastic people. Some of the names they give you that they rented you from before, what are you going to do? You call them, then later on, you find out it's your cousin or something, then you've rented from them. How are you going to do follow-up? I mean, it's like, it's like a big joke, you know? We got people here that are talking that probably don't own rental properties, that haven't gone through this--
No, I've rented slum apartments.
One person, one, one person talking--
I don't have a slum apartment. My place is spotless. The only thing that makes this slum is because when they leave, it is a slum, because they destroyed it, and I'm going to bring it back up with money out of my pocket.
All right, would you please, everyone, when they, during public-- One person, one, one person talking.
I don't have a slum apartment. My place is spotless. The only thing that makes this slum is because when they leave, it is a slum, because they destroyed it, and I'm going to bring it back up with money out of my pocket.
All right, would you please, everyone, when they, during public comment, please address the chair. There's no back and forth. Continue.
This one, the B one, not me.
Continue, face, face me.
Well, that's just it. I mean, you, you know, I don't see an advantage of this. The only advantage of this is, like she says, they're going to, they're going to get money out of us. We can't get money out of our renters. Explain that to me. Another thing I'd like to say, I like the way you arranged this meeting. You notice how the head count was last time? This place is packed. You did this last minute. If I didn't run into somebody that told me about this, I don't do, I don't do Facebook, I don't do the rest of that crap, but I found out through talking to somebody about this meeting. So you did pretty good arranging it so nobody'd come here.
Uh, it was not last minute. There was at least a week and a half's notice, maybe two weeks for this meeting. It was scheduled right after the last city council meeting. Anyone else who has not spoken yet? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is George Ladon. I live at 9511 South 100 West in Union Mills. And, uh, well, I, I purchased the IPMC 2018 version since I wasn't exactly familiar with what you're going to be looking for and what some of the fail items might be, and I, I did have some concerns about possibly this being, obviously, we need the places safe and secure, and that, that is definitely the right. However, there are some items on here. I, I don't know how you're going to have discretion as far as what's enforced, not enforced, because there seems to be some things in here. Exterior gates must latch perfectly tightly. Any rust will be removed and primed. That includes chain link fence, that that needs to be done. As far as electrical requirements, dwelling units shall have a 60 amp service. Okay, well, does that mean 60 amps per unit, or can that be split up in a house that was then converted to a two unit? Because anybody, I don't have anything like this, but there will be several places here in Michigan City who has a two or even possibly a three unit serviced by a 60 amp service. And if you had to change that electric service, more than likely, the person isn't going to know how to do it, and you're looking at $10,000 to $15,000. So that's, that's out. So the person that has had the building for so long, that's gone. He's got to get rid of it. Okay? Another instance here is talking about smoke alarms and that it would deal with when the unit was placed into service, that that is how the smoke detector should be installed, whether battery is okay, whether it has to be battery with electricity, whether they have to be interconnected. And in this booklet that I purchased, it said, interconnection is not required in buildings that are not undergoing alterations, repairs, or construction of any kind. Smoke alarms in existing areas are not required to be interconnected where alterations or repairs do not result in the removal of interior wall or ceiling finishes exposing the structure, unless there is an attic, crawl space, or basement available that could provide access for interconnection without the removal of interior finishes. Well, there's a great many units that that would apply to. And if we get into interconnecting outside every bedroom, inside every bedroom, that is, you know, it is going to be very costly. And it says right here, unless there is access through an attic or a crawl space or a basement, and a lot of times, that is the case. That, and so is, is that going to be enforced to that, where we're going to, you know, do that instead of just the standard of one per floor? Another part of this, again, if you're going to go get into that, then you've got carbon monoxide alarms and protection and how that is to be implemented. And so, again, if you have access to being able to do it, and what constitutes any type of construction or repair, that this has this type of reaction, that is going to be an extreme amount of remodeling on, on many people. There were, another thing that had come up was dealing with pest control and, and who's responsible for what. In this booklet that I purchased, single occupant, the occupant of a one-family dwelling shall be responsible for pest elimination on the premises. So in, in that wording, does that mean that the city says, okay, John Doe, you need to get a licensed pest control provider to do this job? Generally starts out at $175 and $40 a month after that. And what if John Doe doesn't do that? And that, then where does that go from there? If the tenant, who is a single family, and you see it, say that they're responsible, what, what happens there? In multi-occupancy units, two units of the four, however many units, it says, the owner of a structure of a multi-dwelling is responsible for the eradication. Okay. In this booklet, it says, if infestation is caused by failure of an occupant to prevent such infestation in the area occupied, the occupant and the owner shall be responsible for pest elimination. So to that, I would say, what happens when someone has been there for four or five years, or even one year, and they received the, the unit in a certain condition, you have pictures, and now after a year, perhaps they're not taking care of it as well as they should have? And at no time had they mentioned that there was any issues there? And now you have a problem with the burner not lighting, because there's so much grease on the stove, grease on the walls, they're seeing that, there's mouse droppings when they open up the cabinet, and, and trash not taken out. Is the, how, how is that addressed to the tenant to make sure, hey, listen, is there going to be another one, another person from the city to come out and explain to them how it is that you're supposed to take care of the unit so that you and the landlord can work together to make sure that we don't have problems with pest control? And again, when it says it's part the tenant problem and part the landlord problem, the only penalty goes to the landlord. And I understand that we need to keep the housing, you know, up, up to code, and I, I think we have ordinances on the book, which for whatever reason cannot be enforced if there's a lien on the property. Currently, when there is a ordinance violation, I don't know how that can get to fruition, that the person can't eventually have the building either taken from him, that, you know, there's egregious problems with certain buildings. And looking through this manual just briefly, because I just got it yesterday, that, you know, we can nitpick many people out of being a landlord, and I would just like to add that I have 12 units in Elston Grove. And after 2000, the attitude of the historic board about what's going to be doing, and you can't do vinyl siding, you have to do hardy, you have to paint soffit, well, I was out then. And so they legislated me out of Elston Grove. I have 12 units there, and in 2000, I stopped, and since that time, I bought 15 more, but not there. I, I, I'm on the west side, and I am on east port. I like those areas, and they're happy to have me there as I fix up places and spend thousands and tens of thousands of dollars. But if you, if you get into, you know, nitpicking and, you know, not going after the people that you clearly know have a problem, target them, or make legislation that will target them to the point where they can't get around it. But you're going to drag a whole bunch of people into this where they don't have the means of, of being able to address their problems, from the electrical issues to the smoke detector issues to those things. And I do believe that there will be a sell-off, and there will be an increase in rent. I can tell you that this is all I do. Depending on how much I have to put into a place, is exactly how much I'm going to charge for it. So, you know, but I, I would like to see people that can't take care of their unit, get rid of it, and let someone else who has more of a means or an ability or a drive to take care of it, for sure. But I just don't see this ordinance as being the way to do it. Anyways, that, that's my comment on it. Thank you.
Anyone else who has not yet spoken?
Can I respond to a couple of his concerns? Now, or are you still?
Why don't we wait till the, end the public comment, and then I'll get back to code enforcement? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think all of our.
Sir, what's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Warren Clans, 7944 West 20 North, Lepore, Indiana. And I think as all the landlords here are definitely concerned to have good properties, but our other concern is, in what depth does this inspection go? I mean, we've got a lot of areas here that are very broad. I mean, hot water, heating, ventilation system, to what degree are they going to inspect it? Is it resolved, it's in working order? And if you do pass the ordinance and you do get two more inspectors, who, where are they going to get their trainees? I mean, you can't go in and look at, I mean, visually look at a piece of equipment. If it's working, is it good? Some cases it is, some cases it isn't. So I guess my concern, like the gentleman that just spoke, how in-depth are these inspector, if this passes, you know, you could go to any house in Michigan City and nitpick enough and find something wrong. And, you know, hopefully, that's not the intent of this ordinance, but I think that's the concern of a lot of landlords. You know, how in-depth are you going to go? I mean, rust on a chain link fence, you know, that's not a safety hazard to the inside of the housing, or a gate latch that doesn't latch. I mean, that, to me, is not even something that would be a good inspection. So I think that's a concern of all of us. If this does pass, what in-depth are the inspections going to go? What are they going to look at? And what do we need to do to pass the inspection?
Anyone else from the public? Mr. Perry.
Thank you. Dwight Perry, 226 Campbell Street. I appreciate the comments of this gentleman, because as I said in our first meeting, when Craig Phillips wanted to replace the uniform building code 2014 with this, I said this could be used as a weapon, and these comments are verifying that. I saw this, this coming, and I think that if you're going to sue this ordinance, it needs this, you need to go back to the uniform building code, something that cannot be used as a weapon. Trust in human nature that this won't be, and I haven't seen enough good human nature to, to hold that trust. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who has not yet spoken? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark McDaniel. I own, I own a duplex on Elston Street, but I live in Trail Creek. Way back in the dating, this meeting, you talk about two people being funded to enforce. Okay, so I think we need to table this thing until we can get, we know the approval's on the table to get the employment. And then once we get the employment, if you go back to chapter 22 of the city ordinances, it's already talking about registration of properties, it's already talking about having the adequate water, having the adequate electricity, and all of that stuff in, in the homes. Okay, and then you threw out the lead thing, but the lead thing, I think, needs to come back, because most of the properties built before 1974 will have lead-based paint in it. And I can tell you, as a contractor, if I'm in demolitioning a house, I already have to do asbestos and lead levels in the property before I even start. So you already have building code, electric code, plumbing code, you have OSHA standards, you have construction, everything's there. You just don't have the manpower to enforce chapter 22. So table this ordinance, get people in line, and let's get 22 on the table and find out where it goes. And then, if we can do that, I'll volunteer my time to help you write an ordinance that doesn't target a specific organization or corporation. Does that make sense? Everybody follow that?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, good. That's it.
Anyone else? Mr. Grantis?
Derek Grantis, 913 Tall Timber Drive. I'm against this ordinance, but I think we're all concerned about safety. Safety in the community, safety in the houses. I have a couple rental properties. I've had property where we rehabbed it, fixed it up, get nice painted walls, fresh carpet, new kitchen cabinets, and then tenants live in there, and then they damage the property. So how do you address this? We should have a balance here. Instead of using this kind of ordinance as a hammer, as a club, as a penalty for landlords, let's find ways to work together with the city. Instead of all the penalties, let's just have some inspections, try to work it out. I've had a lot of people call me up and say, you have more properties. I try to keep the properties nice. I've had section eight properties, they didn't inspect it, they passed inspection, and the tenants damaged it, they rip out the screens. So these are always perpetual problems that landlords have, and if we're concerned about this, let's work together with the community so we can improve the properties that we have in the community without the, the hammer of all this kind of an ordinance here that would penalize landlords to such an extent that it would be economically disadvantageous. And if we're concerned about the safety of the houses, then we're just right now with this ordinance focusing on landlords. What about all the rest of the properties, owner-occupied properties that are lacking in the same issues here? So if we're all just trying to hammer the landlords, let's look at the whole community and try to raise the whole standards in here for the community. And then for the landlords that do have good properties, if we can have some kind of documentation so if a tenant damages it, and there's reports, and there's repairs, then let's save the landlord from the penalty, because the landlord didn't cause it, the tenants caused it, whether it's broken windows, damaged doors, faulty, faulty gate latches, bad plumbing, they, tenants will damage faucets and toilets and all kinds of things like that. So these kinds of things can do, do occur from tenants. So I think we need a better balance here with the ordinance, so that we can have some, some accountability for the tenants as well as the landlord. Let's work together, so it's not just a hammer against landlords, but we work together as a community to improve the properties that we have here in our community. Thank you.
Stransky?
Sure, sure. Kathy Stransky, 223 Spark Grab. The last time we were talking, it was going to be no cost to the landlord if they did the inspection. Am I, is that still, how it's going to go that way? Okay. And the city officials, the city inspectors will still accompany the landlords to court when they destroy the houses after they inspect them, and they say they're good, they're still going to accompany us to court? You can subpoena them, yes? Okay. And there should be no cost of business to a landlord, because 90% of the people might be making a little money, but between the taxes, the payments, and the insurance, that takes the rent right there. And if they get, if they try to make a big profit, it's out of the market, and you just can't get anybody in there. Okay? And when you rent, you rent to a family of six, and you go over there, and there's 13 people living there. They're sleeping in the living room, they're sleeping in the dining room, they're in the bedrooms. I mean, that, that is out of our control. Once we run into them, that's out of our control. Okay? We didn't intentionally do that. So to, to have a slush fund to kind of clean up and work on this after they're gone, we would have to call, charge them like $100 a month on top of their regular rent, just to have a fund to be able to go in and start doing some of this work. I mean, we shouldn't carry the burden on this. I think everybody thinks we make a million dollars doing this stuff. We do not make a million dollars. I don't rent anymore, because I could not make enough money to cover what I had to pay. So now my buildings are not rented. Okay? They, what they do not destroy, they steal. So we have to always go in and put in refrigerators, stoves, whatever we, washers, dryers, whatever we give them as part of their package to make them more comfortable, to make them in a more livable situation, they steal on the way out the door. Okay? And if you're going to have people inspecting the water, the heat, the, whatever you're going to have in there inspecting electrical, they should be actual engineers that know what they're looking at, that are truly qualified to make the call on it.
Thank you. Ms. Joe.
So I would say that this.
May I amend? Address, please.
Deb, Jeff, 3630 Michigan.
She's got my phone.
I would say this ordinance is quite balanced. Landlords who voluntarily sign up for an inspection, they know cost, and pass any inspection, which I presume that. inspection, they know cost, and pass any inspection, which I presume that most of these landlords will. I think, you know, I think we can all be sure that most of the landlords here are the ones who are doing things well and won't have a problem with this. And so it's a free inspection. And if you pass that inspection, having volunteered for an inspection, you get a certificate to not be inspected for another five years. You know, that's, you know, that's pretty easy. And, you know, the statutes that are out there, I know there's been some complaints about the code sections, but that's the code section now. And, you know, that's what you're supposed to be doing now. So no one's asking you to do anything more than is already the law now. And, you know, I'm sorry that being a residential landlord is difficult and it's painful. And I get that. I've been a residential landlord before and it is, it's tough. But, you know, that's, you know, that's just a business. I mean, all businesses have really difficult parts to it and have some unsavory clients. And, you know, I'm sorry that you're experiencing that. And I hope you, and, you know, had a good chance to get all of that out of your system tonight because I, I know it's, it's hard. And it's good for you to get together and talk about the difficulties you have, just so you can feel better. But I think this is quite balanced. And I think that, I think we owe it to our citizens in Michigan City to assure them that they can go out and find reasonably safe housing in Michigan City.
Okay. I'm gonna take one more comment and then we're gonna go to code enforcement and then I'll ask for a motion. Yes?
Dana Ladon, you have my address under George Ladon. A lot of tenant, a lot of landlords had mentioned tonight about having bad tenants and things like that. I was just wondering if it would be possible to have some kind of screening thing that could come up where bad tenants are reported or good tenants are reported. So when we have a tenant asking us about rent, it makes it a little bit easier for us. And we have legit references that we can go to and we can say, you know, this, this person's on the, a list for destroying this place, or this person's a good tenant and pays a rent on time. It would make it easier for our job too.
Okay, I'm gonna go now. Code enforcement had a few, wanted to answer a few questions.
Ryan uses Zillow and she has a lot of success with it as far as what-
Mining tenants.
Yeah, Zillow or mining. It's free.
Free.
It's free and accredited. It's gonna give you a rough idea of what kind of tenant you're hiring.
We didn't clear that up here, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, I suppose.
She has, she's had a lot of success with that. All I really want, again, two downs. What I really wanna say, and I've heard it say from, said from a couple of people here tonight, is there's nothing to be afraid of. There's nothing new here. This is all the same stuff you should already be doing. So if you're doing the right thing, there's not an issue. So in response to his questions and his concerns, my answer is yes to everything he said. Yes, if you don't go into, if you go into a building, we are not gonna enforce, we don't have the right to enforce you to remodel the entire house to add interconnected smoke detectors. It would be wonderful if they're there, but we, we're not gonna enforce it. We don't have the right to enforce that. If you're in there, you're doing a remodel, you've gutted the place, absolutely, we want interconnected stuff. But are we gonna make you do that otherwise? No, it's not part of it anymore. It's almost become a non-issue because half of our landlords are going to RF anyway. So you don't have to do anything for that, just plug and plug, stick it to the wall. So it's become a little bit less of an issue. The carbon monoxide, same thing. We tried to get an ordinance here in the city of Michigan City. It didn't fly with the state. So we're only gonna enforce it if you go in and do a major remodel. This is not something we're gonna make every person go in there, remodel their house. That's not what this is about. All we wanna enforce is what's already out there. This gets us in the door to do our job. This gets us in the door to keep it safe. I do want a yes on the question about pest control. If it's one person, one resident, it's their responsibility. They probably brought the pests in or they, they created conditions to, to make it suitable for those pests to survive there. It is the tenant's responsibility on a single unit. If it becomes a multi-unit, then we're gonna talk to the landlord. And if that tenant is not compliant, which yes, I have run into here in the city of Michigan City, then the tenant also is being held responsible for not, not working with the landlord to be able to bring the pests under control. So really, basically, everything that this guy's gentleman brought up, yes, is pretty much the answer to everything he said. We're gonna enforce it. I gave him a list of what's there. It's already online, it's already available to every one of you to go and look at. If you can't find it, I'll print you off a set of it. It's gonna tell you exactly what we're gonna enforce. It's gonna enforce what's already existing. It says your plumbing, gentlemen. It says your electrical. If you have a question, the only thing I'm not gonna say yes to is, I really, I, I, I've eaten a local 531, I've got a lot of experience with electrical, 60 amps on three units, I, I'm not so sure that's gonna work real well. But, but, but okay, if it's already existing, we're not even gonna make you change that unless it's unsafe. It would be hard to, to, to this day and age, 60 amps for three units, that would be kinda tough. But really, it's, so yes to everything you said. What you said and how you said it is the way we intend on enforcing it. Tear up the walls, we're gonna make it quite interconnected. Don't tear up the walls, we're not gonna do it. It's really very simple. And there's nothing new under the sun here. This is a business. And I think we need to, I think we need to understand there, there's opportunity, I don't know, there are shortcomings with any business you get into. This is a business. I don't care if you have a restaurant, I don't care if you have a trucking business, whatever business you in, that you're in, you're gonna have issues with it. We can't control your tenants anymore than we can control the drivers that might, might damage a trucking business, or the people who visit a restaurant and steal or damage the business there. It's a business, okay? We just want it to be a safe business. So in response to the homes, no, I'm not ready to go into people's homes. It's their choice to live in those. But the rest of these are businesses, they're, they're, they're public, they're not owned by them. They need to be safe in those places where they go. And that's all we're trying to do here, is just keep it safe. No new enforcement, nothing new. If you need a copy of that, I'd be happy to give you a copy of what I just gave you. Exactly what we are enforcing, we'll tell you where to find it online. And I don't know if anyone wants that or not.
Well, now I would ask for a motion.
You're gonna change this anyways. It's still defective paint. If you're not worried about the lead, you gotta change it in this part of the ordinance also.
That's not part of the code. Let me just speak long enough for everybody here.
I don't know how it would not be part of the code when it discusses it in, in the code.
Our code, our code calls for clean, smooth paint. So I would-
This talks about chipping, peeling, which is all part of the lead.
One question.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You gotta go to her.
No.
I wanna wind this up. So do you, do you want, make a comment, make your comment about the defective paint, so everybody can hear it?
I said she needs to amend the ordinance on page eight in Poloff, where it talks about defective paint. Because if we're gonna do it with lead, we're gonna have to do it throughout the whole ordinance. So other than that, I still stay in the same position on the ordinance. I, I'm fine with, even if the city planner, or city inspector, city controller says that they're gonna give the planning inspection department two more people, I don't believe those two people need to be on this ordinance. I think we need to go back to the ordinances already on the books, get those all under control, and then look at a new ordinance. Because I know Sue and Christine are pulling their hair out when they get complaints and I call them on a regular basis about tall grass, houses with broken windows. There already, there's already not enough of them. So even with two more inspectors, I think they need to focus in on the stuff that's already there. So-
Like to make a motion?
I don't know.
So you can make a motion to recommend, not recommend, an amendment, or no recommendation?
Make motion not to recommend passage.
There's no support for it. So this'll go to the city council with no recommendation from the planning and some committee.
That's why. I was thinking, it ain't going nowhere.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.